Welcome to Truth for Our Time with your host, Tamara Scott.
Good Wednesday, good Sunday, depending on the day that you're listening to this show. For those of you tuning in live at webcastonelive.com, webcastonelive.com, we welcome you to the podcast, the broadcast, the live show. You can call in, you can chat along live on the website. Webcast One is spelled out, webcastonelive.com. We thank J. Michael McCoy for allowing us this time to do this show each week and give you great information that you will not hear most anyplace else. And also then, for those of you on the Sunday show, 99.3, and we thank them for airing this show as well. And I'm getting calls from you who are hearing the show, and I thank you for the kind words and the calls that you're excited to hear the show back on air. I appreciate that very much. Stay tuned. We give you information that you can send to neighbors, to friends, and help educate those around you to make a difference in your community. If God expects you to live through it, He's directed you how to do it. And that's our hope here on Tamara Scott with Truth for Our Time. Joining me today is Jane Robbins, and we're going to get right to Jane. Jane is with American Principals Project. If you've been a follower on this show online, you are no stranger to Jane. She is one of the foremost leading experts on fighting the Common Core and all the reasons we need to do away with the Common Core, an aggressive, overreaching federal program in which Governor Gendel is suing the federal government for their overreach into his state. Appreciate someone with that kind of understanding of a Constitution and courage as a leader. Also, Jane, on this program, on this very program, I think we broke the news nationally that the APUSH, Advanced Placement U.S. History Exam, for those of you, Advanced Placement is when your high school student takes a test, and depending on their score, they can get college credit. Advanced Placement U.S. History Exam had been hijacked, and Larry Krieger, who has written textbooks on helping people study for those tests, and Jane came on the show, and I believe we broke the news nationally. Jane Robbins, thank you for joining me.
Thank you, Tamara. It's good to talk to you.
I appreciate your leadership on this issue, on education, and a variety of other issues. The APUSH exam, Glenn Beck put an article up just a couple of weeks ago, and he credited an RNC resolution. The RNC resolution was asking Congress to cease funding to the College Board, now headed by David Coleman, who is/was the architect of the Common Core. And then they had hijacked, one, the transparency of the process of the test, but also much of the content. America was no longer celebrated. It was diminished, and it was, any mistake we've ever made was the focus. Would you say that's the case?
Yes, that was definitely the case. When they came out with their new framework, which went into effect a year ago, it was quite different from any history course that you or I or any people in our generation had ever taken, because the focus was on everything wrong about America. Everything was viewed through the lens of race, gender, class, which is the way leftist college professors teach history. So it was quite appalling, actually.
And so now we have this exam, and unless our students have been taught in that worldview, they will not pass. Students who actually know real history will not score well on the Advanced Placement exam.
Well, that's true. Now, what has happened, there's been a lot of activity in this area. When we first started talking about this, and you're right, I think Larry and I, on your show, were the first ones to really talk about it, and of course, you were instrumental in the resolution, and we appreciate that. The College Board first ignored us, and then it made fun of us, and then it started to worry. And then, when people started talking about creating competition to the College Board, which of course has a virtual monopoly on all of this, a federally funded monopoly, then they started to get serious. And so by the time the College Board guy testified in Georgia in February, they were saying, "Oh, yes, we're going to work on this. We realize there are problems with this new course, and we're going to fix it." And so they've come out with their revised course, which was released at the end of July. And that tones down the worst of the bias in the framework, but it doesn't fix the problem.
And so I was thankful, I have to tell you, I was thankful when a friend, a fellow RNC member, sent that to me, because when we pass these resolutions, we too wonder, "Do we make a difference? What good are we doing with all of this work?" And Jane, thank you, you were instrumental as well in helping draft that. And it was just amazing how God weaves things together. And because we broke the news on this show, because of the work I do with Concerned Women for America, we had been fighting the Common Core. You're talking about Georgia, you've been fighting the Common Core with Tanya Diddy, State Director for Concerned Women for America there. And listeners and viewers, if you want to get in contact, please go to our Facebook pages or our websites and touch base with us in Concerned Women for America. We will help you learn to make a difference in your community for your children. But we were, so God wove that together. I was able to then take that to the RNC, and it did pass unanimously. But to hear Glenn Beck give us credit, I wept. I have to tell you, tears came to my eyes to think something we had done was making a difference. Now, as you and I are talking about, it's not done yet. Parents cannot rest. It is not over. We have, to me, even though we're not thrilled with the changes yet, we're not going to stop, that we have even made the beast slow down. We've created enough of obstacle that we have a bump in their strategic agenda.
That's exactly right. People can make a difference in this kind of thing if they make their voices known, because the education establishment in this country and the College Board is a massive boulder in the education establishment, while they have gone for decades with nobody ever really challenging them on things. And so they sort of do what they want. They're absolutely unaccountable. But this is the first time the College Board has ever been challenged. And so what you did, what people around the country did, what the legislators who introduced resolutions and statutes in various states did, really got their attention, because they are terrified of the prospect of competition, because that would really snatch away their golden egg that they have. So what has happened with the APUSH is that it's, that particular course is better now than it was, although it's still, see, the problem with the so-called revisions is that the textbooks remain the same, the teacher training remains the same. And the teachers have been assured, "Oh, you don't have to do more professional development. The changes won't be substantial enough that you have to go back to any seminar." So where the rubber meets the road is where the textbooks are being taught in the classroom. And so that course is still a problem. More broadly speaking, the College Board is a problem, because they are revising all of their AP courses. And the ones that are in the humanities, such as the history courses and that kind of thing, are being remodeled exactly the way APUSH was. For example, AP European History goes into effect this month, and if you sit down and read that framework, you think, "Oh, my gosh, this is exactly like the AP U.S. History Course," the original one, the one before they revised it, the recent revision. So the College Board has a very left-wing, progressive view of things, and they're going to inject that into every course until they get called on it. And so are we going to have to fight a 15-month battle every time a new course comes out to get them to drop back and repair some of the things that they did? That's the problem. The problem is there is no competition for the College Board. We've got to have somebody who does their own courses with their own exams that will be accepted by universities. And there are people having serious conversations about this. So the need for that has not gone away.
So I'm talking with Jane Robbins. For those of you who are just listening in, Jane is with the American Principals Project. The American Principals Project has been a leader in good education, in fighting the Common Core. And as you're hearing Jane talk about the College Board, Jane, if they need competition, then what can parents do? As many parents are heading back to school, sending kids back to school this fall, one, what can they do as parents? I think they can demand to see the textbook, they need to see the textbook, and they need to have IDA contact and a conversation with their teacher to see how the worldview may be slanted of that teacher. Think this through, folks. You would not leave your wedding ring with a stranger. Don't leave your child with someone you don't know, that many hours of the day. And then, Jane, what else can we do? You're talking about competition. What does that mean? What does that look like for us as Americans who need to be engaged?
People can contact their legislators, contact the people on their state board. I don't know if in Iowa, if your state board is elected or appointed, but either way, contact them and tell them that you're not happy with the College Board, and that you're hoping that the legislature or the state board will express interest in exploring alternatives. I'm not talking about saying we're going to pull all the AP courses and no kid can take that. That's not what we're talking about. What we're talking about is to express interest in the concept, because who could oppose this? Who could oppose having an alternative there? So that states that like the College Board's AP, they can keep that. If they don't like it, they could look at the new course and see what they think about that. And the more states that express an interest in that, whether it could be through a legislative resolution, it could be through a state board resolution, the better the prospects are of getting funding for a competitive company. And those conversations are going on now. Another thing is that, I don't know what the Iowa law is about curriculum changes, but it may be that your state board is supposed to sign off on curriculum changes. And if that's the case, or whoever is supposed to sign off, whether it's the district or the state board, every time the College Board revises a course, an AP course, that's a curriculum change. And they should not be allowed to do that without the approval of the people in Iowa who are in charge of your education. So if they're trying to introduce, really what they're trying to do is take over the curriculum and all of the subjects that are, that have AP courses, because they're also trying to get more and more kids into AP. So that would mean essentially, if you don't have any control over what they're teaching in those courses, then you've lost control of your schools.
Absolutely. And this is what we've talked about, the whole point of the Common Core, and now the AP, Advanced Placement courses, it in effect becomes the federalized curriculum.
Yes. And bear in mind that the person who is in charge of the College Board is David Coleman. He was widely considered the architect of the Common Core. So he's moved on. Common Core is theoretically English and math, although we know English encompasses a whole lot more than just English. But now he's at the College Board, and his worldview is coming out through all of their AP courses. And the federal government is pushing the states to pour more and more kids into AP courses, whether they're prepared for them or not, get them into those courses. So we may be looking at over half of the students will be taking AP courses rather than your Iowa courses. And so they'll be learning the AP curriculum, which is made in the image of David Coleman. So it's quite a serious problem, and it's something that can only be addressed by having competition, so that the College Board has to be more accountable, and so that states have someplace else to go if they don't like this development.
And we're looking at competition right now in the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium versus the test, you know, the Iowa, used formerly to be the Iowa Basic Skills, and I think it's Next Generation, now Iowa. So we want that competition. Are you thinking we could have competition locally in the states, or will there be some type of another organization that people could start turning to? What does it look for parents? What can they be doing?
Probably it's going to, at least in the beginning, it's going to look like a company that puts out, it won't be called Advanced Placement, because that's a copyrighted term, but that sort of, you know, accelerated credits, college credits course, like the College Board. It would be a national company, but individual states could look at their program, their courses, and see whether they like that, whether they're interested in doing that. Because when it comes to AP, you've got to have a course and a test that will be accepted by colleges and universities. And that's a big undertaking to develop something that they will sign off on. So it's probably not realistic right now to do this locally, but the idea is to have it done, to have a company that raises money and that actually uses legitimate, traditional scholars to come up with a really good, solid course and a good exam. And what parents can do is, they need to, well, two things. They need to express to their legislators and to their state board members that they don't like College Board AP, and they want them to be looking at alternatives.
All right, Jane.
And the other thing is that they need to check those AP courses. Don't put your kid in AP European History.
Don't waste your time. Don't waste your money.
Don't waste your time.
All right, we've got to run. Jane Robbins has been so good to fill us in. Parents, you need to be engaged, you need to be involved, and here's why. Our country depends on our kids knowing our history. We'll be right back. Thanks for listening. Stay tuned. More information coming your way.
From the RE/MAX Real Estate Concept Studios, this is Webcast One Live. Credit cards are like grandkids. They love you. Sometimes get out of control, and it's fun to get a new one. Who can stop them from piling on?
Hi, I'm Tom Coats with Consumer Credit of Des Moines. At the end of the day, you can give these grandkids back, but if you're stuck paying off bad credit card debt. We can help you put the fun back into using credit cards responsibly. Right, kids?
Yeah!
If you need help getting credit cards off your back, call Consumer Credit of Des Moines.
Hi, I'm J. Michael McCoy, and about 20 years ago, I went to a used car salesman by the name of John Hewitt. He had a little shop over there on North Second Avenue called John's Auto Sales, and I bought a car. I found that experience to be one that I had never had before from a used car salesman. He was honest, he was dependable, he had integrity, and he did what he said he was going to do. Well, over the years, between my kids and grandkids, I purchased seven vehicles from John's Auto Sales. And last month, I asked him to be a sponsor. I can tell you about their huge selection. I can tell you about their years of experience. I can tell you about their honest integrity. But all I really need to tell you is that I bought seven cars, and you can trust them. John's Auto Sales, 5435 Second Avenue, Des Moines.
You need a good ride when you hit the trail. Trust a man with the cars, and he goes by the name of Big John. Big John, Big John. From the RE/MAX Real Estate Concept Studios, this is Webcast One Live.
Welcome back to Truth for Our Time with your host, Tamara Scott.
And thanks for staying tuned. I am Tamara Scott. And we want to thank as well our sponsors, Christians for America, Christians for America, Crave Reviving, Christians Reviving American Values. And I always say Christians Reviving American Values every day. We thank them for coming alongside and partnering with us. And if you'd like more information on how you can partner with us, you may call J. Michael McCoy at the studio here, or you can contact Crave as well, either one. And we thank you for that possibility. We have been talking with Jane Robbins about the APUSH, Advanced Placement U.S. History Exam, and she warned on her way out quickly that you need to make sure what your kids are learning. Check the textbook out. Check the course out. Don't put them in it. Don't even waste your time and put them in it right now, because it's not a good course. Even with revisions, it's not a good course. And we are thankful we made the progress we made, that we did create the bump in the road. For the first time ever, they're now discussing possibly yielding to the public and doing what is right and being transparent. But as Jane said, they need competition. And I will tell you this, it will come, just as colleges were not sure about homeschool students in the beginning, they didn't have, what is it you call that sheet? Were your grade, your grade average, your grade point, and your transcript, because you were homeschooled? Well, homeschoolers were smart enough to start making those, but also colleges started figuring out homeschoolers were just great students. And so they started going around those two obstacles. I think that will happen with this test as well. I think when people figure out these tests are so slanted, and the colleges know, the colleges who teach the information sincerely, know that it's not a good indicator of knowledge, accurate history, they'll start ignoring these tests as well. And you already hear Jane talking about the competition. Here's why we have to have it. It's not just my worldview or your worldview, but if you don't know accurate history, you won't know the Constitution. And when we have elections like coming up, kids don't recognize good candidates, because they've been told the Constitution's outdated, the white man is greedy, capitalism doesn't work, all these falsehoods. So they don't know the truth, and they hear someone saying that they want to tax your income up to 90%, or that they're going to give you free education, they're going to give you this free thing and that free thing. And you have to understand, nothing is free, somebody's going to pay for it. But if our kids don't understand that, they think that sounds all good and dandy. So until we get back into the educational institutions, and frankly, the entertainment industries, with accurate history and truth, we're going to struggle with the elections, I think, I fear. We've been talking about education. My next guest, I'm so pleased she called in, is Michelle Crystal. Michelle Crystal has been on this show as well. She's an activist on the Common Core. Michelle, Crystal, thank you for taking time to call in on a busy day.
Oh, you're welcome. Thanks for having me.
So you are not only what people call an activist, and you were just a mom, reading the stuff, got involved, went to find out answers that people didn't want to give, and now you're running for school board.
Correct. Actually, about three years ago, I did stumble upon Common Core, and I did what every mother would do. I did my research. I approached my superintendent, and I am in Adel de Soto Minburne District. After that, I approached my school board to no avail. With that, I kind of took the airwaves, not only with WHO, WHO, and I spoke with legislators down at the Capitol. After the head, we were able to meet behind closed doors with Governor Branstad. After that, to no avail, I talked with the Iowa Board of Education and the Department of Education, and they truly are running everything regarded with education. And they told me, because I was just a mom and not a school board member, that I had no voice at all in what was happening in Iowa's education curriculum.
Okay, hold on.
And even stated, okay, go ahead.
If we had a sound effects machine, you would hear brakes skidding right there.
Oh, exactly.
They said to you, "You have no voice, you're just a mom, you're not on the school board."
Yes. They said, "I'm not on the school board." And they said, as long as they've had Iowa Core, which is Common Core, that no school board or superintendent has opposed the Iowa Core. So they said, unless you, if you would like to make a difference, then you need to be on the school board. So here I am, almost three years later, I am running for ADN School Board. And what's interesting, there's three incumbent seats that are up. All three of the incumbents are running, and there are four people opposing. So now you have seven people in Adel de Soto Minburne School running for three seats. And if that gives you an inclination, after speaking with the Dallas County Elections Officer Board, she said they usually have to beg people to fill school board elections. And she said for the first time in Dallas County that they handle, they said every single school board seat is actually being ran against. And so people are finally waking up.
Right. And that's what it takes? Unfortunately, the stink has to hit your backyard before anybody cares about what's happening, the sewer plant going next door. Not until it hits your back door. Do people care? Thank you for being engaged. Thank you for getting involved. So you're Adel de Soto Minburne, and we have other folks, I think, in other districts running as well. I think this has created activity and interest. How can people find out in their districts who is running, and how to get involved, and who to get behind?
That is a great question. Unfortunately, we are actually a week from yesterday. So next Tuesday, everybody wake up. The day after Labor Day, everybody's going to be sleeping in, I'm sure, on Monday. But Tuesday morning, when you wake up, please go vote. The school board election for the entire state is Tuesday. What you need to do is either get on your county's auditor's website or your county's elections office website. It will tell you right now where to go and vote early. I currently, I voted early down at the auditor's office. You can do that. You don't have to worry about it. But also, please check that website, because there are not many, very many polling places for the school board elections. It is not like a general election. Every paper should have posted bios of all of the candidates running, and they have contact information. I have been contacted, emailed, called, thank goodness, by numerous parents in my community wondering where I stand. And I would suggest everybody call them personally, ask them directly, what do they think of Common Core? For me, that's a huge issue. Everybody raise their hands. I'm sure everybody, we just got our county tax assessment in the mail last week. What I ask you to do, either look on the bottom of your stub or turn it around, and it'll actually give you the percentage of your property tax and where it's going. For me in Adel, 64% of my property taxes are going to that school district. So when I go out and knock on doors, people say the school board election doesn't matter. It's just a popularity contest. For me, it's five people. So five people on an elected board are taking 65% of my property taxes and deciding where to spend it.
Let me ask you-
Now in Waukees-
Go ahead. Let me ask you a quick question, then we'll get to Waukees. 64% goes to your property tax, and then we have the state tax, because we pay state income tax, and more of your money goes to your school district as well. So it's-
Not only that, but you also have levies and bonds at your school district. So that goes in as well.
Plus federal tax.
Correct, on the supplemental aid, correct.
Oh, my goodness. So the next time, I mean, we really need to figure this out and sort it out for folks, when the school boards and the schools and the unions want to fuss about the legislature not giving them money or cutting their funds, when they actually got more money for allowable growth. They got an increase, but it wasn't near enough. When you consider they're already getting 64% of your property tax, at least in your district, not to mention our state income tax, our federal income tax, and as you say, levies and bonds. Those folks, schools do not need more money. They need more principal and management.
Correct. We definitely, what I ask you to do, too, find out whoever your school board is, and get on their website, just your school district's website, and it'll give you the minutes to all of the last school board meetings. Now, you can read those minutes. I have. I couldn't go back far enough to find one dissent vote in anything that my school district was voting on. Everything was voted five, nothing. Even in utopia, there's got to be some dissent. And I am finding no one is. And everyone needs to remember, the superintendent actually works for the school board. It is not vice versa.
Right. And remember this-
And people have got to push back.
Remember this as well. Your school board is not elected to represent the school. Yes, that is some of their job, but you already have a communications director, you have their own press releases coming out. So it's not like the school board's only job is just to let you know what the school is doing. That's certainly what they should do, but they are there to represent the parents and the students. That's what we never see. That has become absent in the mix.
If anyone can actually get a response from their current school board member, I applaud you. The question I would ask is, what curriculum are we currently teaching in our school? I have asked that question, Tamara, for the last two and a half years, and I've gotten a response of cricket. I have approached the board, no one addresses me. I don't get phone calls returned, and I don't get emails returned. So if you get the same type of response, do not vote for your incumbent, and find out somebody that will.
What curriculum? I would also ask, how much local control do we have over the curriculum? And I would ask, are you for Common Core?
One thing I would say is, I know in the state of Wisconsin, there was a school district, actually a school board, that was actually able to get their district out of Common Core. I actually emailed the lawyer at the Department of Ed, and I asked her the question, "Is Iowa a local control state?" She responded back and said, "It depends on what you're talking about." So I posed the question, "If a school board was actually able to come up with higher standards than what we currently have, would we as a district still receive federal funds?" She replied, "No."
Repeat that last line.
She, yeah. So I did, and I have it in writing. I asked the lawyer at the Department of Ed, "If a school district was able to show the Iowa Board of Ed that we could actually come up with higher standards than what we currently have in place, if we implemented those standards, would we receive federal money?" And her response was, "We would be breaking the-" And her response was, we would be breaking the law, and we, as a school district, would not receive federal funds.
You would be breaking the law in Iowa?
In Iowa, correct. And so that goes back to legislators need to change the Iowa code if that truly is the case. So we don't have local control. Teachers want to do something about it. I do know of a teacher who's looking at retiring from teaching high school algebra because he said, I can't do what I want. They won't let me. And it is Iowa Core. And I have a few, we used to trust our teachers with it, now we want them to be zombies. And if they don't do it the Common Core way, then they can't do it at all. And that's what they're being forced to do.
So folks, we have just a couple of minutes left with Michelle Crystal. She's running for school board in A.D.L., ADM, A.D.L. DeSoto Minburne. In your district, no matter where you're at, you likely have a school board election. If nobody is running or if no one is challenging, you might need to consider a write-in, which is very doable on a low voter turnout school board election. You need to take control. You need to take control back of the classroom and of what's happening to your child. I know we have Doug Campbell, who is running up in the northern part of the state, Mason City. We have other good candidates running in other districts. Michelle, you were just about to mention Waukees.
Well, I don't actually know, unfortunately, any in Waukees, but Waukees, I believe they have a little, they have like seven maybe school board members, but I do know in Ehrlich, we have a Rex Danfield and a Marvin Taylor that are phenomenal and could totally change Ehrlich around. You also have Emily Rouse out in Am Cam School District, that is wonderful as well. Eric Borseth in Southeast Polk, and Douglas Campbell, like you said, in Mason City. Also in ADM, there is Don Orban. He would be phenomenal. So if you can get actually two people, Don and I, I think it takes more than one voice. And I think we could change, we could really shake things up in the state of Iowa. And I would love to be the leading school district to do that.
Thank you so much, Michelle Crystal, for your time. Thank you for running. Thank you for putting yourself out there. Folks, don't let somebody else control what happens to your kids. Get involved. Find out who's running, what they stand for.
From the RE/MAX Real Estate Concept Studios, this is Webcast One Live.
I'm Brian Leach, owner of Service Legends, and my position is Chief Talent Officer.
I'm Nicholas Wondersheid.
I am Bernie Hobbs.
And I'm the Service Manager.
Marketing Director and Client Relations Manager.
Everything that we do is about ensuring that we exceed your expectations.
Our clients are important to us. 100% satisfaction.
We're not just focused on heating and cooling. That's the easiest part of our job, actually, is fixing furnaces and air conditioners.
Everyone that we come in touch with, we want to improve lives.
Bottom line is, we've got our installation guarantees, 25% energy savings guarantee, comfort guarantee, temperature selection guarantee, property protection guarantee.
100% satisfaction guaranteed. Fixed righter, it's free.
All of those guarantees are backed up with 100% money-back guarantee. To hold ourselves accountable to making sure that you get what you're after.
Just fixing the problem today. If they have another problem five days down the road, it's still fixed righter, it's free.
We use what's called straightforward pricing. Our technicians are going to give you an exact two-to-the-penny price on what it's going to take before they move forward with any repair. That way, you know what to expect.
It's the same price every day.
No surprises.
If you get off work at 5:00 in the afternoon, you come home, you realize that, oh, my furnace is broken, now you need to call somebody out that night, you shouldn't have to pay more for that.
We're guaranteeing service 24/7.
We run afternoons, evenings, nights, weekends. We're staffed to work that.
Phone rings at 3:00 in the morning, you'll get one of our representatives answering the phone every time.
We're not sending you out to Timbuktu in some call center. It's our Service Legend team members, our Mission Control Team.
I'll take a call anytime.
And then they answer the phones, same way during the day as they do at night.
It's a great day at your service company, how can we make you smile?
That's the only way to provide true 24-hour service.
When you're able to let somebody actually live in their home safely, when they weren't able to do that before, where they don't have to stay up at night and worry about, is the heat going to come back on, are we going to freeze the pipes? Is the baby in the room next door going to be sick because they got too cold? When you're able to help somebody overcome challenges like that, that's impacting a lot. That makes a difference. I get goosebumps thinking about it.
I love the team. I love the people that I work with.
We have fun, but we work hard.
I call them my ambassadors of legendary service. If you can just envision what that is, that's who we're sending to your home.
They literally will call in, pick up the phone and call and say, hey, I want to talk to your manager. And I get on the phone, they're like, that technician that was at my house was the greatest technician ever. That's cool to me.
We want to brighten people's days.
Every person that we have going into the house has gone through an extensive background check.
Drug testing. We have a very thorough interview process that one out of 140 people make it through.
If we promise you something, that's what you're going to get, no matter what.
We're here when you need us, to protect the safety and comfort of your family.
If you're not happy, we're going to make it right.
If we're willing to put 100% money-back guarantee on what we do, what type of work do you think we do?
Give us a call, we're there for you 24/7, 365 days a year.
Enough said.
Welcome back to Truth for Our Time with your host, Tamara Scott.
And thanks for joining us. I am Tamara Scott. We appreciate you staying tuned. That was Michelle Crystal, talking to you about being engaged, being involved. And she said, I caught, she said, I do what every parent would do. Unfortunately, that's not the case. Not every parent does do the research and check and find out what their kids are being taught in school. We wouldn't have some of the messes we have today. All right, so RNC is changing their rules, and it looks like Carly Fiorina may get into the next debate. I can tell you in my other role, as National Committee Woman, I have asked them to reconsider the format. I would like them to have three different debates. There are 18 candidates at this point. I think divide them by three and put them all in an hour slot, no ranking, nobody gets any special treatment, one hour, one hour, one hour. They draw the hat, which hour they get in. You will watch the hour you want with your candidate, and eventually, a lot of people will go back and watch all three hours. Great way for us to learn who the candidates are. The cream will rise to the top, as Carly did in the last debate, and then people can decide from there on for the next debate, how it should. I think that would be just a great idea. I've mentioned that to the friends that I have at the RNC, but no, that doesn't seem to be the way we're doing it. So I stay there and I continue to be that little obstacle, trying to get things right. And the one thing that we do do, as we told you earlier in the show, is we get great resolutions passed. That one that Glenn Beck mentioned, crediting the US History Exam, the Advanced Placement Exam. We have caught the college board's attention, which is phenomenal. And no, they are not where we want them yet. Do not let your child take that AP History course. It's a waste of time and a waste of money right now because it's so left-leaning. But we have at least caught their attention, and they're pretending to revise it. We've got them. And if they don't, as Jane Robins said, we'll come up with competition and create another organization that will actually treat it with the accuracy that it deserves. The other RNC resolution that we passed, there were several judicial overreach on marriage, the Iran deal that needs to be stopped. By the way, if you have not called your legislator, call your legislator 202-224-3121. 202-224-3121. No matter where you live in America, that number will get you to your US Senator and your congressional member. Call them and ask them to please disapprove this deal. More information continues to come out. Besides $150 billion in frozen assets that will go to the country that is responsible for terrorism around the globe, including assassination attempts on diplomats here in this country, you need to be calling. This deal has to be stopped. No deal is better than a bad deal. You would not want your daughter to marry someone who is going to cheat on her, hurt her violently, lie about her, to her, and gosh, that kind of explains Iran. So beyond that, we would have to become opponents, in many instances, with our friend, Israel. And it could put us at a position where we find ourselves at odds protecting, actually in the deal, it talks about protecting the nuclear program. We're not just okaying it, we're blessing it, we're protecting it. Even though our own Senate, US Senate members, David Young, our congressional member, flew to Vienna trying to find out what was in those side deals, was not allowed. Senator Don Ehrn says, you will not be allowed. We will not get to see what is in those side deals. John Kerry admits, no one in his department, he cannot confirm, anyone in his department has seen the side deals. He thinks maybe one undersecretary has. Say no. 202, put it in your phone. Call that phone number for any US Senator or congressional member and tell them this is too much at stake. No on a bad Iran deal that will likely start an arms race and already has in an unstable region. All right. One of the other resolutions we passed was the RNC Resolution on Life, and this is why I'm there, to do what little I can to make a difference. And I was able to get this paragraph in here with the help of one of my guests from the show, Dr. David Prentice, who does research on fetal tissue in the womb, but never from elective abortions. And so here's the paragraph. "The Republican National Committee calls on all branches of the United States government, including national institutes of health and state governments, to cease funding in the use of research of these illegally or unethically obtained human organs and tissues obtained through elective abortions." So you know why you have to have that. The videos we're now seeing that unmask and expose what really is happening at Planned Parenthood, no matter what anybody else says. If you don't stop the demand, if you don't stop the money from the buyer, you will continue to have the selling. So we have to stop fueling the demand, which literally places a price on the head of the unborn. Tim Overland is joining me in studio, and I thank you for that, because I know you two were in Northwest Iowa last night, and you just drove in just now to join us.
Just now, yes, just now. Just pulled in.
That is a four-hour drive. I know you left early. Thank you very much for joining us.
Wasn't quite four hours, but yes, it was a good drive.
Very good.
Tried to go clear.
So last night, Northwest Iowa, the family leader had one of their regional summits. Thoughts on the evening?
That was a great night. I think originally it was supposed to be just a presidential forum.
One of the series.
One of the series, yeah. And I know over the last couple of weeks, it's been changed, it was changed to a pro-life event. So phenomenal. One of the board, one of our board members was invited to speak. So Pastor Kerry Gordon spoke last night, so we wanted to make sure we supported him and support the event in general as a pro-life event. So I thought it was great. You were just giving out one phone number. We had another phone number we're supposed to remember last night as well. So we don't have too many phone numbers, I will have to put them in my phone.
Do you have that phone number? 515?
Yeah, it's on my phone.
281-5211.
There you go.
515-281-5211. Whose number is that?
That would be the governor's office, although apparently he's helping with the naming of a sub this morning. So, but please call him after lunch, I'm sure he'll be back.
And I have sent emails to his former chief of staff and to his legislative assistant, asking for him to be the lead. The longest-serving governor, if he would take this issue, could be that igniting moment that a Walker saw in 2012 when he took on the unions. It could spark across the nation. And Terry Branstad could lead the nation-
Sure.
-in stopping this atrocity that we are doing to our youngest citizens.
The sad part of it is, we could have done it before the first video came out. We had it all but done. And we ran into, you know, the Senate, and Senator Gronstall. But I think we're at the point now where we need to let these guys own these videos and let them defend them. You know, whether that's Senator Gronstall, whether that's Attorney General Tom Miller, who's been asked now to investigate, or the governor. I mean, he's at the point now where, Governor, there are outs, there are 30-day outs in these, just like Governor Gendol has done. And he knows of them, it's just a matter of acting.
When someone brought up to me earlier in the session, it was a Medicaid-involved issue, the home, when it came up that the girls were being mistreated in the home, I can't remember what community that was in. He closed those two homes for challenged or juveniles or mental, I can't remember right now. And that would have been in a Medicaid-involved issue, from what I understand, he didn't wait for legislative action, he made an executive decision.
Sure.
So that is the same type of thing that we're asking for here.
Yeah, there's a 30-day out, and it's a contract. It's a contract with Medicaid. And from what I understand, there's two of those, he could stop immediately with a 30-day notice. And there's another one that apparently there's a little more complications to, but still, it can be done. You know, and again, Governor Gendol has shown that, and other governors around the country have shown that. And, you know, it was stated last night, and I've heard it a few times, you know, we moved heaven and earth to raise a gas tax that people weren't really, didn't want. We moved people off committees and moved people around. And from what I understood on this, the Health and Human Services discussion, it was, Governor, we'd love some help on this, we've got it done in the House, you know, we would love some help in the Senate. And from what I understand, the message was, you guys just work it out, I'll sign what you send me.
At the very least, we've got to quit sitting and not doing because we think somebody's going to give us pushback.
Right.
It's time for us to put it to them and let them stand with their back against the wall and tell the Iowa people why they're not going to listen.
Agreed.
Okay, so you're with Personhood.
Yep, Personhood Iowa.
You heard Senator Johnson speak last night. Thoughts?
It was amazing, it was great. I know Senator Johnson does a lot of, has done a lot of work in the life area, but to my knowledge, this is the first time I've heard him say anything that would remotely sound, you know, pro-personhood or to that model.
Okay. And so I just realized we've got to go to break. I just checked it. Thank you so much, Ryan, for keeping me on my toes. We're going to be-
From the RE/MAX Real Estate Concept Studios, this is Webcast One Live.
Credit cards are like grandkids. They love you, sometimes get out of control, and it's fun to get a new one. Who can stop them from piling on?
Hi, I'm Tom Coats with Consumer Credit of Des Moines. At the end of the day, you can return the grandkid, but you're stuck paying off bad credit card debt. We'll help you put the fun back into using credit cards responsibly. Right, kids?
Yeah!
If you need help getting credit cards off your back, call Consumer Credit of Des Moines.
Hi, I'm J. Michael McCoy, and about 20 years ago, I went to a used car salesman by the name of John Hewitt. He had a little shop over there on North Second Avenue called John's Auto Sales, and I bought a car. I found that experience to be one that I had never had before from a used car salesman. He was honest, he was dependable, he had integrity, and he did what he said he was going to do. Well, over the years, between my kids and grandkids, I purchased seven vehicles from John's Auto Sales. And last month, I asked him to be a sponsor. I can tell you about their huge selection, I can tell you about their years of experience, I can tell you about their honest integrity, but all I really need to tell you is that I bought seven cars, and you can trust them. John's Auto Sales, 5435 Second Avenue, Des Moines.
You need a good ride when you hit the trail. Trust the man with the cars, and he goes by the name of Big John. Big John. Big John.
From the RE/MAX Real Estate Concept Studios, this is Webcast One Live. Welcome back to Truth for Our Time with your host, Tamara Scott.
I figured out why I didn't hear the cue. It helps when your earphones are plugged in. I had them in my ears, I just hadn't plugged them in. Okay, so thanks for staying tuned with us. We have a little fun here in studio. And Tim Overland is joining me with Personhood, but we were in Northwest Iowa last night, listening to wonderful speakers, several great speakers. Tim, the point was brought up last night, and I raised the point last night. last night. Planned Parenthood, 1.4 million, according to Susan B. Anthony's 2014 report, actually from Planned Parenthood, to 1.4 million a day in taxpayer dollars, 127 in excess revenue, which we would call a profit.
Right.
This nonprofit-
Yeah, there was a billion. Yeah, that's 127 billion.
Or million, million, right, million. And then 1.4 billion is their net assets. 1.4 billion. And so I just raised the point. First off, if the left were intellectually honest, the left who say they hate fat cat corporations and tax breaks, how about tax funding for someone making 1.4 billion? They should be walking away from-
But that's a nonprofit, Tamara.
So, and also, we, you know, we and I were talking about this. At what point are we going to have the courage to say enough is enough? We have seen the video where they talk about cutting up the face to get to the brain. I said that quietly because if you have kids in the car, you need to turn the radio. Cutting up the face to get to the brain. They're selling hearts. They're selling organs. They're selling thymus. They are literally selling their souls for the profit of selling the organs of others.
The most recent video was, some of them, I'll be totally honest, some of them, I've gone to transcripts, you know, watched so much of it. Then you go to the transcripts and, and at some point, I will watch all of, all of them in their entirety. But the most recent one I did watch, it was interesting listening to the two corporations that, that, you know, get the, the body parts from Planned Parenthood as they were fighting over, you know, oh, they've got insiders. And it was just, you know, these two evil, you know, it's like, which bad guy do you root for or root against? It was just, it was really, yeah, unsettling.
To see these videos, if you have not seen them, and Life News, most groups have them out now for you to see. Just do a search on them. People holding dangling limbs with tweezers, talking about them coldly, discussing deals over dinner, dissecting specimens. It's despicable. And when they first came out with their defense was on legalities, this is not about legalities. It's the depth of humanity and what we would do with or to someone. But on the money that they make, they have no mammogram equipment. They will never have mammogram equipment because if they were concerned about the health of women, they wouldn't be killing little baby girls in the world.
Right. There was a great map that, that, and I don't remember the name-
Allison Howard. Is she awesome?
That was great. They, there's a great map, and I'm sure you have the website. You can go there and see, you know, there's 13 Planned Parenthoods in the state of Iowa. 13, too many in my opinion. But there are also, there are actually other, there's 213, I think federally licensed and clinics out there that actually do the things that Planned Parenthood says they do. They do all of these health. So those are the ones that, and there's a great map, you know, hopefully you can get that website.
I will put that link on my Truth For Our Time page later today or tomorrow. Truth For Our Time will have it. Allison Howard with Alliance Defending Freedom, she had that, that clinic, that-
The maps. And they've got them for every state in the country. So.
What would you say to folks? Johnson said it, Senator Johnson, we cannot wait to the legislative session.
Correct.
So what do folks need to do?
We need to call the governor, for sure. He can act. He can do this. You know, I don't know that the, the push to push Tom Miller for the investigation, I don't know that that-
I'd push.
I would push him. I don't know that it's going to go anywhere, but push him. And, and as you said, make them, make them, make them explain it. Senator Gronstall, all of these guys, again, as you just said, we don't need to wait till they get back in session. The governor can act, and we do, we need to call them. We were talking earlier about the Health and Human Services bill, and it was done. There was money that was going to be directed back to people, to clinics and, and family planning or whatever, that actually were going to help people in a positive way. That was done. And even the folks that are not as strong on this issue as you and I are, that are Republican or call themselves pro-life, even from a tactical position, we just reloaded Planned Parenthood's guns with three to six million dollars. Do you think they're going to use them against Democrats?
That's here in Iowa.
You know, that's just here in Iowa. And, and it was, and I, it's a wide range, three to six million, because different reports talk about how much it was last year and this year.
And it's hard to track all the various-
They do it on purpose. They make it all twists and turns.
So call your legislators and, and tell them you want to defund, at the very least, your, your dollars should not be funding the killing of someone else's child. You want to put it in your own gas tank, in your own table to feed your own kids.
To your own, I mean, the pregnancy centers that are actually saving lives.
Yeah, they have, those clinics have mammograms. They, clinics actually do healthcare. Healthcare does not plan in the, is never plans for the demise or death of a patient. That's not healthcare.
Right.
Anything in closing?
Again, just, I would reiterate, contact the governor's office. And, you know, if you're, if you're interested in Personhood Iowa, you can go to personhoodiowa.com. We have an event coming up. We believe that as mad as we get on the political front, until we as the church get our house in order, who are we to tell them if we can't get our own house in order? So we have an event coming up on September 28th. It's called Bringing the Church Back to Life at First Federated Church. It's a free event.
I like it.
So we'll, I'll be, I'll get back with you and announce who the speaker's going to be. We had a slight change in, in plans, but I'll get that back to you.
Bringing the church back to life.
And I'll, I'll give another quick shout out to one of my board members, Rebecca Maxwell, has done a, put together a phenomenal presentation on Planned Parenthood and Margaret Sanger and the Eugenics Movement. Might be changing now because the last time she put it on, we didn't have all these videos. But it is, it is factual. It's from a young woman who's very articulate and passionate about this issue. And it's, that would be worth the price of admission, let alone the other speakers we'll have.
Tim Overland, thank you for your work.
Thanks for having me. And Tamara, it was great.
Appreciate it. Going to jump to the phone line right now. I have Rob Keller on the phone line. Rob Keller just hosted a 5K run for Pastor Said's wife, hosted her in his home. And now you're going to tell us about a prayer vigil in just the little 60 seconds we have. Rob, go.
Sure. Thanks, Tamara. Yeah, the prayer vigil is coming up on Saturday, September 26th at 6 o'clock in the evening. It'll be held at the Iowa State Capitol Building. This year, we'll have it on the east side of the building at the World War II Memorial, the Freedom Flame. But yeah, if anybody would like to come out, we'd love to have you guys out that Saturday evening where we'll be lifting up Pastor Said as he's still in prison. It'll be the three-year anniversary of him being in prison. It'll be in conjunction with a global prayer vigil, over 600 prayer vigils around the world that day to, to mark that three-year anniversary. And then we'll also just be speaking and praying for the persecuted church as a whole.
Very good. And I appreciate that. There's a huge prayer event happening in North Carolina as well. Governor has called that, that state to a response. And so I appreciate what you're doing, Rob Keller, September 26th, 6:00 PM, World War II Memorial at the Iowa State Fair, I mean, the Iowa Capitol.
Right.
And Rob, you're going to join me next week?
Yes.
So Rob will be my guest. We'll be talking a little bit more about his time with Pastor Said's wife and what has transpired there. We're going to be talking as well about persecution, discrimination, right here in Iowa. We are out of time. I thank you all for staying tuned with me. It's been a busy show. We always try and bring you the great information that helps you live a better life. If God expects you to live through it, He's directed you how to do it. We help you when the headlines hit home. Thanks to my sponsors. If you want to be a part, come into Truth For Our Time on the Facebook page or tamarascott.com. I almost forgot. tamarascott.com where we post and read the archives of our shows. Be blessed. You've been encouraged. Now never be complacent.